All right. I can call the Wairika meeting to order January 20th, 2022. Please rise for flag loop.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Indifficult.
Call the order. Did I think these were, did you guys change these around a little?
No, these are all right. We're now on roll call.
Chair Osborne.
Here.
Co-Chair Rosensky.
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fernandez.
I'm here. Is it okay that I don't have my camera on?
Oh, you're perfect.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. All right. No special presentation. General public comments. There is nobody here, so we will skip general public comments. Commissioners, have any comments? Okay, staff.
Just a update. We're gonna restart up some of the more, like, some of the general plan, public outreach again. Since we've got the housing element draft done, that's gonna be open, so we're gonna be focusing on that. And then planning some events around a meeting with the school board for general plan items and trying to plan out the next school year so that we have some general planning events during the school year throughout either kids lunches or in civics classes, government classes. The school board superintendent seems to be very much supportive and on board for that, so that's really great. So we're gonna start with them since it's off-season, so hopefully I can get on their next board meeting to have that conversation with them. I also have a general plan presentation and public outreach event for the Karuk tribe coming up here in the next month, so they're actually really excited to be engaged with us during this process as well. So really excited for those events, and so I'll keep you guys in the loop as we start getting those back up and running. We've had several private site development and site plan applications, very excited. We have an expansion of NorCal happening. We have a conditional use permit coming to you next month for Golden Eagle Charter School is moving into a new building and kind of expanding their services. So yeah, a lot of really good things happening even with the, all of the construction going on on Highway 3, so going really well.
So they announced where they're gonna move that charter school to yet?
It'll be the, they're proposing to move into the old Napa building. Yep. Yeah, so they do have to get a conditional use permit to do that, so they have filed that, and that should be coming to you for a public hearing next month.
Great. But Whitwell said that, well, he told that they're planning on adding on to that building for that. Apparently, they're gonna possibly move in before that.
Correct. Yeah.
All right. Consent agenda. Minutes from June 15th. If I do, any commissioners have any questions on it or want to comment on it or add or remove something or from it? Guess you can't add it.
Approve the minutes, unless we do.
Take a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
I need to abstain, I think.
So we did actually do some new research on this, and as long as you trust the judgment of the other commissioners on the notes, you are able to approve the minutes.
Okay, then I, then I would vote to approve. Thank you.
All right. Public hearing.
All right.
2022-16, Turi Street rezoning application.
All right, thank you. So this is coming back to you guys after two months ago. We had noticed this and had some issues with the mail getting the 300-foot noticing letters to the applicant, but frankly, that was probably a good thing. So what we did after the meeting is actually Commissioner Devlin had a really good idea of instead of denying the application or requiring a general plan amendment, there is a commercial and professional offices zoning available that allows residential uses as a conditional use permit. And so the applicant agreed to amend their application to go to CPO instead of RPO. And what we did was we, in, to avoid spot zoning, which was kind of one of our concerns with that, is I sent out information letters to about two dozen properties within that area that would be good for conversion as well, and got their interest and saw if they were interested in doing that. I got two letters back for more information. One individual did contact me after that, asking for their properties to stay CH, and those are properties that were owned by Pacific Realty, and they're the ones who own the ShopCo. And so it was the three properties immediately adjacent to the ShopCo property. And so it was very easy. I just took those out of the application. It does not impact any spot zoning issues for that, so that was the only person who requested not to be rezoned to CPO from CH. So that's wonderful. So that went really well. And so we also did this as a rezoning, and then we added the CUP option in there as well so that the single-family home has the conditional use permit attached with it. So you'll see that those conditions of approval are listed in the staff recommendation as well as the approving resolution for everything to move forward. And when we did do the public noticing, we did notice both the rezoning and the CUP so that people understood it was both applications. And you'll see that in your staff reports, beginning on page 7. So all of the parcels that are going to be changed from the commercial highway to the commercial professional offices starts at the bottom of page 7, and it goes all the way to top of page 8. So again, none of these property owners protested to us doing the rezoning application. Most of these properties are actually residential units already, so it would bring them into legal conformance with that zone, and it is still consistent with the general plan, which addressed the issue that we were recommending denial for last time. So even with the conditional use permit, the project, it is not considered a project under SEQA because it's not going to have any direct or indirect impacts that we can foresee by doing the rezoning and the award of the conditional use permit. Beginning on page 9, you'll see all of the findings related to that. So it's interesting because when the application for rezoning was submitted, we did not have a rezoning ordinance, so we rely on the state code to give us the findings for approval on that. But since the conditional use permit aspect of the application was added after we approved the new conditional use permit, you'll see that the findings of approval are the new findings that the commission and city council had approved and ratified prior to them filing that. So this was a good run-through of our new conditional use permit findings and kind of the differences between the old findings and the new ones. And so based on our assessment, we're able to make all of the findings to be able to award a conditional use permit with the addition of some conditions. The list of conditions are all on page 13 of your packet, if you'd like to take a look at that. Some of it is standard language that we recommend for every single conditional use permit, but the ones that we did add that were particular to this one was the removal of the previous hair salon sign, since it will be a residence now, is to remove that sign prior to occupancy. And the other one is if they're going to... I think it was that one. Oh, no, I didn't have to put that one in there. There was another landscaping one I almost put in, but then I did double-check, and it didn't have to do the landscaping requirement under the water-efficient landscaping ordinance. It was under the threshold for that. So city staff are recommending that Planning Commission make the findings of approval for both the rezoning and conditional use permit application and adopt a exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act. We did add the application in for your review, and then the resolution that we're proposing for approval is on page 22 for your review.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
No, I'd say it went pretty smooth.
Yeah, a lot better, a lot better.
Yeah, and I assume they're happy. That's why they're not here today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Amy, you have any question?
No, I, I was with Brian when he came up with this idea, and I thought it was quite brilliant. So I think that it's, it's a really great compromise and resolution to this, so I am in support of it.
And they do have a prospective buyer already, so this didn't really interrupt their buying process, so everything kind of turned out all right.
Yeah, I noticed it's an escrow, so that's great.
Yeah.
Good deal. All right. How about a recommendation?
Motion to approve PCR 2203, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Wairika approving Turi Street rezoning and conditional use permit application, 2022-16, the conditions and adopt the finding that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality.
All right, second?
I would second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right.
Thank you. So just to let you guys know on next steps, the conditional use permit is good to go. There is a 10-day appeal period for both, but the rezoning does have to be heard by city council, so we've already noticed that, and it will be going to city council on August 2nd for their consideration.
Great. No old business, new business. The 2022, 2030 draft has been out.
All right, if you want, so I think Michelle and Vanessa, if you wanna unmute, and Felicia, if you wanna pull up the PowerPoint. I think you'll have, yeah, there you go. You're good. So, yep. Actually, we might need to do the other screen. Someone reconfigured our computers up there, so they're not working as well.
Great, and I just want to confirm that you all can hear me.
Yep.
Great.
And sound check here too. I'm Michelle.
Perfect. Thank you, Vanessa and Michelle. Oh, you're so smart. It's all good. Can you guys see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then if you wanna drag the little screens off to the side just so that they don't cover any texture, cool, thank you. All right, thank you, guys. So we're really excited. So this is kind of the first element, kind of general plan run-through we'll have for the comprehensive update. So as we mentioned before a couple of times, the housing element has a statutory requirement to be done prior to... Formerly, it was November of this year, but we got a slight extension for all of Siskiyou County. I think Wairika will be the first one to actually submit our draft to HCD at the state. Everybody else is a little, a couple months behind us, and so we were given a little bit more time to February of next year. So this has a much shorter timeline than the other elements, but frankly, it's a really important element, and a lot of what we'll be doing in the land use and zoning is gonna be based off of a lot of our housing needs. So I think having this done beforehand is gonna be really helpful for us kind of keep in mind what people have asked for and are looking for in terms of housing moving forward. So this is a soft opening to our housing element update. So the draft is dropped today, so you should have gotten an email from me right at 5:30 when this started with an electronic version of the housing element update. I have several copies, hard copies that are bound in nice paper being made for you and should be ready for pickup on Friday for you. It's 168 pages, so it's, you know, I'm, I'm a textile-type person, so I need that kind of texture. So we're really excited for that, so we'll go to the next slide and do some introductions. If you haven't had a chance to meet our team from Plan West, there are contractors working on this, and so we have Vanessa and Michelle today, who are gonna be helping present some of the information that we've researched and discovered throughout this process as well as going through some of the key goals and constraints that we've identified for the City of Wairika, specific to our needs. Felicia has also been extremely helpful doing our stakeholder interviews that we'll talk about in a little bit, and just very excited to go through and do this for you. If, next slide. So the purpose of our meeting today is to just orient you to the housing element, answer any technical questions that you may have right now. We're not gonna go through the full document today. My plan is to also give you some time at the August meeting after having some time to review to also talk about this as well as members of the public. So we will be launching this. It is on our Wairika general plan webpage, and I also have an email for the general plan newsletter. The Karuk will get a copy, the county, as well as a number of all of our stakeholders who have participated so far. So we want to make sure that we're giving a lot of time for public comment as well as meeting some statutory requirements for 30-day review. So we're gonna go over some basics of the housing element. I know Matt has been to a couple of our presentations so far, so it will be repeat information, but I'm not sure if Richard or Peter have been able to join us for some of our other working sessions on this, so we want to make sure everybody's got a good base knowledge. We will go over the draft housing element, the housing needs assessment, which is some of the data that we've discovered throughout this process, and the key aspects of our housing element programs that we're recommending for approval, our project schedule, next steps, and then again, just open for discussion from you three, as well as questions, and Amy as well on the line. And so we'll go to the next slide. So I'll kick it off over to Vanessa and Michelle.
Great. Thanks, Juliana, and thanks for having us and for the time to present some of this information to it, to you. The public, you know, your input and public input is a key part of the housing element, and we want to definitely incorporate, you know, comments that we hear based on that into the update before it gets submitted to HCD and adopted later on, late this year, early next year. So the, as Juliana mentioned, the housing element is an element of the general plan, and it's kind, the city's comprehensive statement of current housing needs and projected future housing needs and includes proposed action on how the city can help meet, meet those needs and provide housing to all income levels. Currently, we're in the six-cycle housing element. That's kind of prescribed by the state, and so the element period is 2023 to 2031. Next slide, please. And so the housing element, what does it do? It provides an assessment of current conditions and then provides projected future needs. It identifies opportunities, housing opportunities, and also constraints and barriers to housing production, and then establishes goals, policies, and programs on how the city can, can meet its goals and reduce, reduce any barriers or constraints that have been identified. And then it also is, updates city policies and programs and to meet current and new state housing laws, which there are many of as of recently. So next slide, please. I'm, great. So, in, as I noted before, strategies and programs, some of them, they focus on conserving and improving existing housing stock, but also on how, how the city can help facilitate new housing development and provide affordable housing for all income levels by removing any governmental or non-governmental constraints to housing, and it also promotes fair and equal housing opportunities to all. Next slide, please. Part of the housing element is also, has to address the regional housing needs allocation, also known as RENA, which is prescribed by the state. And for the City of Wairika and Siskiyou County, overall, these numbers were low for this, this housing element cycle compared to past numbers, but looking to the future, it's good just to keep this in mind as the city is identifying programs. But the state's, you know, number for this cycle was just two units, which is very low. And as we will get into, you know, there are many, there are more housing needs than that that were identified through, through our assessment. Next slide, please. So now we are gonna get into kind of just a really high-level overview of what is actually in the draft document that you will be receiving. Next slide, please. Because it is, as Juliana mentioned, 168 pages, so there is a lot to digest and a lot of information in there. So we'll kind of try to go through some of that and highlight some, some things for you to look at in there. So there's an introduction that, also in the introduction, it goes over some of the public participation that we've done to date, so workshops, and then the city staff has done quite a few stakeholder interviews that are incorporated, and then also looks at overall general plan consistencies and looking ahead to, to future housing, housing need and productions. Chapter 2 is the goals, policies, and programs, so that's really where the goals are laid out, and then the action items on how the city can meet those goals are, are defined as well. And chapter 3 is an analysis of, an evaluation of the previous housing elements' goals and how the city did and how effective those, those policies were, and if those are carried for, forward to this housing element, and then also, you know, new goals that are required based on that. Next slide, please. So those first three chapters are the main chapters of the housing element document, and then a lot of the data and analysis is in these appendices. So appendix A is the needs assessment, and that we will, kind of, we will get into just really soon in this presentation, just an overview of what is in that. And then appendix B is an assessment of fair housing, and this is a new requirement from the state this cycle, and it is affirmatively furthering fair housing, also known as AFFH. So it analyzes a lot of demographic and other data and analyzes all of that. Appendix C is the housing sites inventory, so it identifies vacant sites that are, are available for housing and meet, meet certain criterion requirements. And appendix D provides a list of some governmental funding programs to support housing development, and E is a glossary because there are a lot of terms in, specific to housing elements that are, you know, used throughout state, state laws and in the housing element itself. Next slide, please. Great. So next slide, we will be getting into an overview of the needs assessment. And in this, the needs assessment includes, is based on the 2020 census data, a lot of it. And so it includes population trends, household income, household characteristics and conditions, housing costs, and then identified some of those governmental and non-governmental constraints and resources and opportunities. Next slide, please.
And if I may really quick, Vanessa, one of the other things that we're doing is a housing condition survey, also called a windshield survey, where we're going around and ranking houses on a one-to-five scale, one being in very, very good condition with maybe a minor paint job or, or fix-up here, all the way to five, which is considered dilapidated and not safe for human habitation. We have a good portion of the city done. It was not ready in time for this because it got so hot, and it wasn't very pleasant walking around doing that. It's, it's a little difficult doing it in a vehicle, at least for myself, because when I'm walking, I'm able to get a better look at the houses themselves. And so we'll be doing that citywide for all of our houses, and then hopefully in the future, have programs around trying to help individuals who are a three-to-five to hopefully get their housing back into good shape. Because again, we talk about these housing units and how many we have, but if they're in dilapidated condition and not fit for human habitants, it's, it's not really something we should be counting as a unit for us. We should be making sure those units stay in good, healthy condition. So that will not be part of this draft right now, but we are working on that as the weather gets a little bit better or trying to do it in chunks during the wee early morning when it's not so hot to do those. And so that's not here today, but that will be included in the future.
So if I hold off painting my house, I might get, be able to help?
Well, I don't know. It's not so much paint. It's a, so for example, I gave a four to someone because I could see the roof was starting to kind of, to give way. The roof had not been replaced in a significant amount of time.
It's probably the worst case.
Yeah, so if, if you need just a new paint job, you're a one. I'm sorry. You're in, you're in good condition. Actually, Peter, I did hit your house. You are a one. Yeah.
Is that good?
Yeah, that's very good. It's not a two, it was a one. Yeah, you did very good. I don't know if I went by your house yet, but anyway, so I'm slowly making my way through the city to get that data, so that will hopefully be part of the final. It's just taking us a little bit longer to traverse the whole city. There's 52.8 miles of roadway we gotta hit with.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you for the interruption, Vanessa. Please continue.
Yeah, no, thank you, Juliana, and for, for taking that on also, and will be a great, great addition to, to the document. Um, so just looking at the existing housing unit mix, there's a majority, single-family residences, and, you know, about 30% multifamily units in the city and 5% mobile homes. Next slide, please. And this slide really speaks to what Juliana was talking about, the housing condition survey, so, so you don't have to do all the math. That approximately 51% of the city's stock is 40, 43 years or older. And so, you know, when, as houses age, maintenance needs increase and costs increase, and, you know, there's a lot of, or a large portion of the city that is potentially on fixed incomes or, you know, has lower incomes, and so that cost is, is not attainable to maintaining their, their houses. So the housing condition survey, and then, you know, some of the programs are targeted towards helping, helping property owners maintain and their houses. Next slide, please. And so a big, a big aspect of the housing element is looking at affordability, and this is defined by the state into these income groups from, you know, extremely low to above moderate. And the, overall, you know, 38% of the total households within the city are considered low-income, which is, you know, which is a large number and can affect how, how people's ability to obtain housing. Next, next slide, please. And this is just to give you an idea of, you know, some median income by employment sector, and the ones highlighted are ones that fall into that lower income categories, which is, you know, includes arts and entertainment, recreation, service industries, retail industries, professional, scientific and management, manufacturing. So there is a wide range of, of employment industry, industries that fall, fall within those categories. And, next slide, please. And, you know, as we all are aware, housing costs have, have increased significantly in the past few years and are very volatile and, you know, are constantly changing. But this is just highlighting that, you know, there, there is a significant cost burden to, to many of the lower-income residents of, to obtaining their housing. Next slide, please. In this one, to me, was, is pretty telling, is, you know, overall, the median home sales price in Siskiyou County, so this is county, you know, county-wide averages, but in October of 2021, the median home sales price was, you know, almost $330,000, and so the income needed to afford, afford that is $110,000 a year, which is not attainable to any of the employment sectors and households that are on a single income. It would take, you know, multiple incomes to, to meet that, that need. Next slide, please. And this is just a sample of other information that is, is within the needs assessment. There's an analysis of the senior population, and then also approximately 20% of the total population has a reported disability in their household. And another thing to note is that almost 60% of the owner-occupied households are over the age of 55, so are, are in that senior population. Next slide, please. Another part of the needs assessment, as I mentioned earlier, is kind of looking at, at sites. So we did a vacant sites inventory and looked at all of the vacant sites that are residentially designated, currently residentially designated in the city, so everything from single-family to multifamily. single-family to multifamily. And then we also looked at the proximity to services, so to stores and proximity to transit and then availability of infrastructure, so water, sewer, dry utilities, including power, and then looked at environmental constraints such as flooding and wildfire and provided an evaluation of of sites that are available for for housing production. Next slide, please. And in the housing element, HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, has a very defined criteria of what they are looking for to provide lower income housing. So anyone affordable housing in those kind of higher density zones. And so there is one site in the city that meets all of HCD's criteria and also meets the regional housing needs allocation. So this is the site that is identified to to meet that criteria in the housing element. Next slide, please. And so all of the needs assessment is really used to inform the programs and make them, you know, as most useful to in actionable for the city moving forward. So I'm going to turn it back over to Juliana, I think, for to get this section started and then I will jump back in.
Yep. Thank you. So going through the key aspects of the element, we went through and did, as Vanessa said, a significant amount of public engagement from a couple of different varieties. So we had at least two workshops specifically around housing and we had a couple of different activities within our open house, our general open house around housing, the type of housing people would like to see, what type of program and the programming they'd like to see around that. But I think some of our most meaningful input came from our stakeholder interviews. So we sent out invitations to people who were in the housing industry. So we did have a collection of realtors, title agents, brokers, banking, developers and a variety of people throughout there, trying to get their specific perspective, property managers for apartments as well, asking them questions along the lines of what they feel the barriers are to providing housing, trying to address some of the issues that they've experienced being within the housing industry to do that. And and it's been a really wonderful experience and people have some really interesting ideas for the city of Wairika and I'm pretty excited to get that input. And then continuing that, as I said before, we'll have this study session, we'll have another session at our next meeting as well as putting this out to the general public for written comments and and things like that. And then city council. So there will be plenty more public engagement around this so that people understand what's going on, have the valid input. And if for some reason, we missed a certain perspective, we would love to hear that at this point. And so within our community housing needs identified, we had some common trends that were coming through. We found that from our employers, we need workforce housing specifically. So there's an estimated about three hundred and fifty job openings right now. And so NorCal, the casino, several of our retailers have issues with finding employees. And then the main thing they say is that there are plenty of employees, but there's nowhere nearby to live. And so as a commuter of over half an hour, it's a really difficult and it's very expensive right now, especially with gas to be a commuter as well. And so it just doesn't fiscally make sense to get a job in Wairika if you live anywhere else outside of that thirty-minute driving bubble. And so we found that workforce housing is going to be a really strong need. And so that doesn't necessarily mean affordable, but like we showed before with the different industries, the the average and median income those people make actually put them into the affordable category. So whether you call it workforce housing or affordable, there's, there's a lot of opportunity to help with that type of housing development. The other thing we found is that Vanessa brought this up, but I think it's a super interesting data point, is that a majority of our single-family owned housing is owned by individuals fifty-five and older. And so people are aging in place is what that's called in planning. And so these people are aging within these three, four-bedroom houses that they raise their families in and they're not moving to other housing that's a smaller scale and allowing other people to move into those family-sized houses. And so we have kind of a little bit of a choke point happening from the perspective of a lot of our stakeholders as well as the data to back that up. So aging in place will be a big thing, which includes ADA improvements. So people need ramps to get into their homes. So when I was going through the housing condition survey, that was one of the things I noticed. A lot of people have makeshift ramps to their front doors because they don't want to go into ADA-specific housing because it either doesn't exist or it's very expensive because it's linked to a hospice program and people don't necessarily want to go to that step yet. They want to stay within their homes. A couple of other of our stakeholders indicated that there aren't any small-scale housing for, you know, people who want to stay within the community that they grew up in, raised their families in, but there's nowhere else for them to go. That's nice quality and it's one floor. That's what we were hearing from a lot of people is they don't want any steps. They don't want multi-floor units because again, as you're aging in place, those things become a little bit more difficult. And so it was a really interesting array of needs there. And so when we go to recommend goals, policies and programs that we want to achieve in the next eight years, a lot of what our recommendations are is rezoning for diversity of housing types and more in refining our planning processes to allow multifamily and these different housing types. So one of the things you'll see is that even though we have a significant amount of the city zoned for high-density residential, anything above a triplex requires a conditional use permit. And the minute you require a conditional use permit, that's additional time, that's possibly additional environmental review, that's additional cost to the application for even a quad or a fourplex house. And it's a big barrier for people who may want to build those units. And so that's something that we're recommending in the goals and programs that we work on in the next eight years and with our general plan update and zoning code update is rectifying a lot of those issues that are frankly making it a lot more costly for developers. And so the other thing that we have is the AFFH. And so what you'll find going through the fair housing assessment, it's a very interesting assessment because it's something that we have not had to really be introspective of as a city or even as a planning profession. This is something that's becoming more popular nationally is coming to communities like Wairika and looking at if we have segregation. And what we found within our fair housing assessment is that we do actually have pockets of segregation based off of income levels, ethnicity and race, as well as disability status. And so most of the people who are within those three groups are generally confined to the east side of I-5 and in parts of the downtown where our more affluent area, which has access to more services, is in the northwest portion of the city. And so you'll see a lot of the maps in that appendix and assessment that shows that, that there is actual a geospatial segregation of people. And then the other interesting thing is one of the maps is opportunities for employment. So our south side of the city is one of the highest opportunities for employment, but it's one of the areas that we have the least amount of housing in. And so for people who are, again, when we're looking at workforce housing, transportation is a huge cost to those individuals. So we all know how much housing costs, but to live very far away from your job and pay for transportation, we don't have the transit system bus that works very well for us here. It would take me three and a half hours to get here from Dunsborough if I took the bus one way. And so we have to be cognizant of that. And so some of our recommendations recommendations is expanding our mixed-use development and allowing some more mixture of housing and commercial together, especially for those workforce houses. So again, with NorCal submitting a site plan to expand their facilities, you know, where are those new workers going to live? You know, it it makes a lot of sense. There's a lot of vacant land surrounding that area that we could put into, you know, some workforce housing so that their workers would, you know, live two blocks away. And again, you save a lot of money not having a vehicle and having to put up with that maintenance. So those are things we'll take into account as we go through amending our programs. And so we'll go to the next slide, please.
I just like going to aging in place. I like to think that I age gracefully.
You are. Yes. Like I said, your house is a one.
Just as old.
Yes. Yeah, it's always, it's always super fun to talk about that because as planners, we don't know what terminology people prefer. Some people do not like being called seniors. Some people do not like being called aging in place. Or it's just.
We've all been called worse.
Because technically, we're all aging in place, if you really think about the term. So, yeah, but it's it's really looking at some of the things that, you know, when you build a house in your your twenties, thirties, or you pick a house in your twenties and thirties, you don't think about certain things later in life. And so like, for example, my house has a lot of random half stairs, which are not fun to deal with. Yeah. So if I lose my eyesight, I'll be falling all over my house. And so some of the key aspects, again, to the update, the housing needs is updated with brand-new data that reflects our our new conditions under the census as well as other data from the state of California that's a little bit more specific to us. We identify some strict constraints to housing and what we do when we look at constraints is we look at governmental and non-governmental because there are certain aspects in the non-governmental that we may or may not have control of, but we need to keep in consideration as we move forward. So again, cost to construct, you know, the California building code, we cannot exempt people from. We, that may be a non-governmental constraint, but that's something we have to work around. We can't necessarily change that as a local government. But again, going back to our zoning code, we can change that. We have options to be able to be more flexible with people. And so the constraints to housing, look at our zoning code. And then, like I said, the feedback from stakeholders was really essential for that. Our sites inventory is based on a vacant sites analysis and evaluation of proximity of services. So even though we showed you the one parcel that we're going to show where we're going to build our minimum two units, which actually can handle up to, I believe, eighty-nine units based on the zoning and and utilities available to it. We do have a full vacant sites analysis of all vacant sites that could host housing within the city. Next slide, please. And then affirmatively furthering fair housing, as we talked about before, AFFH appendix, again, very interesting assessment that we haven't had to look at before. So it'll be really good to get your input as you read through those and whether that's new information for you or if there's something that we need to add to that or kind of look at from a different perspective, it would be great to hear about that. And then we updated our goals, policies and programs. So part of our housing element update is we did analyze our progress on the last housing element and I believe and Vanessa and Michelle, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we achieved about fifteen out of the twenty-one programs that we have recommended in our last housing element. And so we'll be bringing some of those forward because some of them should still be considered. So again, making sure people have fair housing opportunities, making sure landlords are not discriminating against different tenants. So those will be carried forward with some of the new recommended policies and programs. And so one of the things we also did is some of these goals, policies and programs are state mandated. So the ones that are state mandated, you'll see in the chapter two, which is our goals, policies and programs, you'll see a little bear next to it. And so we have a nice little table that says, these are all the goals that we have to do per state regulations and that we can't take those out with this draft. All of the other programs and policies, though, are completely open for our amendments. And so if something in those doesn't look quite right, we can recommend those changes to city council and city council can also recommend some changes before we send it to the state. So that's something to keep in mind. If it doesn't have a bear next to it, we have some ability to either take it out or to amend it to make it work for us. And so next slide, please. So I'll hand hand it back over to Vanessa on the summary of our constraints.
Great. Thanks, Juliana. And I think that Juliana, you did touch on, touch on a lot of these things, so I will move through it somewhat quickly, but I do want to highlight a couple of things as well. So one thing that I think you mentioned was, you know, a majority of the residentially designated land for multifamily units, there's a threshold. So a lot of it requires discretionary permits. So it requires a conditional use permit, which can add, you know, it can add uncertainty, it can add costs and it can add time to to these applications. So that can be viewed as a constraint and something that that in the programs, you know, there's some considerations on on improving that process or looking at it closely to see what what improvements the city can make or changes. And another constraint or, you know, something that that we noted is the limited variability of available housing types. So there just isn't a whole lot of diversity. And Juliana did mention this of, you know, allowing some more mixed-use housing types that that includes commercial and residential uses is promoted in some of the programs. And another thing to note is, you know, there is, one of the constraints is their low vacancy rate and there just isn't the housing stock available for the people that need it. And then another thing that the city I know is committed to to promoting is information to property owners and developers into how to navigate some of the the available resources, including ADUs and some other state laws that allow for smaller lots and things like that. And then a constraint that, you know, the city doesn't have a lot of control over is just the high cost of land and the high cost of construction. And something to note is, you know, it's really noteworthy that the compared to the relative area medium, the incomes, the costs are are very high. Next slide, please. So the programs do try to address many of these constraints as best the city can. So identifying the need for all housing types, supporting workforce housing. The other thing that Juliana and Felicia have been looking into is just the opportunities for redevelopment of of vacant buildings and underutilized sites. So I don't know, Julian, if you want to mention any of that. You did kind of do a survey of the, you know, vacant commercial buildings in in the city. So there is a discussion of that, too.
And I'll just add really quick. So what we did with that is at our first housing workshop, it was brought up by a couple of the participants about why not use vacant commercial properties like the ShopCo building? Why not look at some of the empty or non-used buildings in the downtown for housing? And so what we did as part of this process is Felicia got a list together with our utility billing department and identified all of our commercial properties that currently do not have water service or are using water service. So they may have had a bill and paid the base fee, but they're not pulling any water out of the meter, which is a good indication that it's vacant. So we took a look at those and made a list and kind of looked at which ones would be good for redevelopment into housing. And I think we identified about seven or eight possible commercial properties that if we were to change the zoning code and allow for more flexibility of mixed use, those could have either second-story apartments or could just be converted into a full apartment building. And so that might be an option in the future is for those redevelopment types. And then going through again, back to the housing conditions study, one of the other objectives with that is that some of our dilapidated housing may just be prime for redevelopment. It may just make more sense to demolish those units and work with a developer to develop more higher-density housing in those areas where it's appropriate. So for example, there's quite a bit of dilapidated housing that's, you know, just off of the downtown past City Park, kind of in like the Hill Street Sherman area along those lines. And if there is a big collection of four or five, you know, poor-conditioned buildings, you know, it may make more sense to just work with a developer to acquire all of those at once and then start to do some more infill development. So that way we have the infrastructure available to those lots. So that developer doesn't have to put in any new infrastructure. They don't have to put in any new curb gutter sidewalks. It's already existing. But we're using lots that are frankly not in circulation at all anyway.
Are any of them zoned commercial, I mean, zoned for all?
I don't believe any of them are. No. So I think that area is mainly the low-density residential. So they would be only allowed to have that single-family unit or under the new Senate Bill Nine, a duplex. And so what we would be looking at, and and this is something I shared with Chair Osborne, is a missing middle book, which we've ordered you all a copy of, which has a array of different housing types that are outside of the typical, you know, apartment building, single-family home duplex. It's all the different types of housing in between that. And we've actually gotten some traction with a couple of developers who like the cottage court idea where even though it's considered high-density housing per acre, what it is is you have like a a single lot with smaller unit houses. So they have basically a shared agreement or an HOA to take care of the landscaping, but then you'd have several. But then you'd have several little eight hundred square foot houses that would be perfect frankly for people who are trying to downsize or for someone who is a single income trying to not buy yet, but maybe rent for a year or two before they buy a home. And so when you have those six or seven smaller houses on a larger lot, that still is considered high density that we're not necessarily used to seeing, but would still fit the character of a lot of these neighborhoods. So you wouldn't have huge tall apartment buildings. You would still have, you know, the community character along with those. And so when we talk about redevelopment to a higher density, that's kind of what I think would work for a lot of those older neighborhoods is we'd still stay with the character, but we would be able to get more units in there. So thank you, Vanessa.
Great. Thanks. Next slide. And we did talk about many of these things. So, you know, it really is a, the programs are a multi-pronged approach that try to create actionable items that the city can take. And some of those are zoning related, some of those are, you know, supporting programs, existing programs or, you know, looking at collaboration for new programs. And looking at, you know, the different, different residential densities and multi-uses that, that could be accommodated in different areas of the city. Yeah. Next slide, please. Great. So next slide. Really briefly, I think Juliana talked about this at the beginning, but overview of schedule and next steps. The, we'll, we'll be coming back to you in August to have additional discussion and take, take any comments and from the planning commission or in the public at that meeting. And then the draft will go to the city council for consideration of approval to transmit to HCD, the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And then HCD has ninety days to review and provide comments back to the city to incorporate into the document. And then it comes back to the planning commission and city council for a final approval with any revisions as a result of HCD comments. And the draft, the current draft is posted as of now, it sounds like, from Juliana on the city's website. And then Julian, I don't know if you wanted to talk about the review worksheet that you prepared now or get into that at a different time.
Yeah, I can bring this up briefly. So because it is such a big document and it is a little bit more technical than what you guys may have been used to doing. And, you know, just based off of feedback you've been giving about you haven't been as involved in some of the amendments of the drafts you've been given. It's been more of like, we need your rubber stamp. I put together just like a little brief worksheet with a couple of questions for each chapter that may help you work through the chapter and kind of give you some context and the type of questions you might, may want to answer while you're working through. It's obviously not a required worksheet. You may give public comment regardless and you're not required to use this. I just thought it may be a helpful tool for some people who may not be used to reading these documents because they can be very technical. But we do still want to be able to engage everybody and get some feedback. And even if you don't read the element, there are some questions in there you may just be able to answer just off the cuff, you know, as we go forward. So for example, just what are your feelings about the goals, policies and programs? You know, are there some in there that don't match what we need to do? Are there some programs that you would like to see? For example, one of our stakeholders mentioned a hotel motel conversion program into residential. We do not have that as a program right now, but if that's something that we're interested in doing, we can add that. A lot of other cities have been doing similar projects like that for their older historic hotel motels, just making them basically into apartment buildings and just kind of doing those building upgrades. So that's, again, there's a lot of opportunities that we can do. There's tons of ideas out there that other cities and places have done. And so if we don't cover something that you think would actually work here, we want to hear that and be able to incorporate it.
The city of Ucay took a Best Western project to stay. It's a beautiful place they bought.
Yeah. Just to summarize into the, the mic, no offense, Richard, you, you sit back and you relax. But Richard just brought up a Best Western that got converted. So just for the notes. But no, yeah, it's, there's a couple of different places that have done that where they either do a full conversion or they do a mixture. I've been to actually a hotel that turned out to be a mixture of apartments and hotel rooms, which was a very interesting experience.
The city of Fort Bragg is building right now. A painter has a business here in town. He's down there painting it for the last three months. It's fifty-eight units and it's for low income. That's units that are, I think about seven hundred to nine hundred square. It's in all of, all of them except for twelve were all single level for elderly people or in terms of, it's a, the whole complex. It's just south of Fort Bragg. It's really a beautiful setup though.
Yeah.
Big complex.
Oh, yeah. Hi. Oh, no, you're okay. So yeah, so that's kind of the worksheet that we're going through. And then Vanessa, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to bring up.
No, we can go to the next slide, but I think I covered most of it. Yeah. So the next steps are to, and we're happy to hear any and all comments from the planning commission, the city council and the community. And we will incorporate that into the draft element and submit that to HCD for their review. And then it will be coming back to the planning commission and city council for final adoption.
Thank you.
And now, yes. So thank you so much for having us and we're happy to try to answer any questions you may have right now. Or as Juliana mentioned, that worksheet, or just getting any other questions to back to Juliana that we can assist her in answering later on.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Future planning items.
So yeah, our schedule is going to be a little kind of funky. So most of what you see on there is not going to happen next month. And thank you, Vanessa and Michelle. We'll, we'll take some notes, we'll send over some notes for you and everything. So I believe we've got a couple of things. So the tentative parcel map hasn't gotten through review yet, so that'll probably be pushed back. But that is coming up here. We are going to have that public hearing for the Golden Eagle Charter School at the next meeting. We just got that one in. And then basically I'd like to just spend time on the housing element again and that public hearing. So I'm going to move the objective design ordinance and the urban design workshop to the September meeting. And so what I'm hoping to do and what I've kind of discovered, so Commissioner Devlin wanted us to send the objective design standards out to housing developers and people who would most likely utilize that program. And so we have that out to them for comments. We've actually heard back from one so far saying that the objective design standards look straightforward and that they don't see any issues with it. But I think one of the bigger things that came up when I emailed him and, and got some more information on some of his concerns is the city of Waireka has never had development standards in terms of aesthetics. So you're kind of a hodgepodge of different type of architectural styles. So you've got old western, you've got some colonial, you've got some art deco. And then as I brought up in that objective design standard, you've got the new courthouse, which is gorgeous, but it doesn't look like anything else around it. And so I, I would love to explore with the commission as part of the general plan process, some urban design workshops on what types of design elements you do like. Because one of the things in my experience is that requiring developers, especially commercial developers, to meet certain design standards that are aesthetic based is not very hard for them to do. And so for example, if we take the courthouse, if we had design standards in place, you know, they're going to have to put siding on the building anyway. They're going to have to pick colors. They're going to have to pick different window styles anyway. And so by just giving them an outline of, these are the types of styles we would like to see, you know, really doesn't add a significant amount of cost to them. They're going to do it anyway. And actually frankly, the courthouse would have been great because it's the state of California. They've got the money to pay for whatever they want. And so I think it would be really great to start exploring some urban design ideas. We did have a couple of stakeholders that said that, you know, one of the things they wish they could see is a consistent design element of the city. One of the individuals commented that they don't see any development within the city. Actually, it was a very reoccurring theme when we said, what kind of development in the city do you think is good? That is a good example and a lot of people couldn't think of any. So kind of going back to that discussion of, I think we need to kind of come together, get some public outreach around urban design and have maybe some more standards on what we would like things to look like.
Do they still have standards on minor street?
They do. So the, the historic district is the only one that has architectural standards and.
When I moved here down there, they were very strict.
Yes. So in, in historic districts are more strict. And so what we can do is we can still do objective design standards or we can do some aesthetic standards that are a little bit more loose, that people can have more flexibility. Or if you do want to go very strict, you can. Leavenworth, Washington is a very good example of very, very strict design standards. New Glarus, Wisconsin is also a very, very good example. If you want to Google that one, it looks like a Swiss chalet, Swiss village, similar to Leavenworth. And so on the spectrum of planning, as we always talk about, you know, you can go very, very strict if you have a particular vision about the town. And, and that is your choice as a community if you want to go that way. Or, you know, you can go to a more flexible, you know, workable style. You know, there are, Bend, Oregon, for example, has three different architectural styles people can choose from that they find meet the needs of the city because they want to encourage some diversity in style, but they like certain things the way they are. And so we could have multiple options for people or we could just have one standard where it's just a little bit more broad. So we've, we've got a lot to play with, but I think, you know, just based off of the input we're getting so far, I, I think it would be good to have that with the objective design standards to really kind of start to get closer to what we would like the community to actually physically look like. And this can also go to landscaping standards as well. So we do have a planting guide for trees, but we don't have much recommendation in terms of landscaping around firescaping, zere escaping for drought control. Firescaping is actually really cool. So it's all about picking plants that are not prone to fires. So certain ones are like that. So it, it's actually a really, really fun, very visual exercise and I really enjoy doing them. So it's something I'd like to kind of partner with together. So I'm hoping we can do that in September and get some of those people together to go, yeah, we like what this looks like. We do not like what that looks like and kind of narrow down the direction we'd like to go. So.
Great.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else commissioners? All right, I'm going to adjourn.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.